Welcome to the January 11th, 2017 Scarborough zoning board of appeals meeting. And roll please.
Ms. Shoup?
Here.
Mr. Blaze? Mr. Hebert? Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Stark?
Here.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
And Mr. Richard?
Here.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And will I have motions for approval over the minutes of December 14th?
Motion approved as presented.
Any second on that? And discussion? Okay, Ms. Shoup, your voting number tonight. Mr. Richard is also, Ms. Shoup, you're the second alternate, right?
Yes, yes.
So you'll be a vote tonight too.
Will we vote in tonight?
Yes.
We'd like to vote too.
No, you just need final vote.
You need the final vote.
Okay.
You need final vote on the minute.
Okay, thank you. I'll put them there, yeah? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, and we'll go right into appeals. It's appeal number 2587, it's a variance appeal requested by David Haskell and Sir. Oh, last week. 2596, special exception by Sean Kelly, 81 Holmes Road, this is map R20 parcel 8X. Do you have a representative? If you think you might, state your name and address and we'll go from there.
My name is Phil Leflam, general manager at the Doggy Cottage, representing Sean Kelly.
Could you repeat your last name again, sir?
Leflam, L-A-F-L-A-M-M-E.
Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry to mess you up.
What's that?
Sorry to mess you up.
That's okay. What would you like me to?
Just state your name and address and your business, your position.
Yep, Phil Leflam, general manager of the Doggy Cottage, 81 Holmes Road in Scarborough.
Thanks. And just give us a brief overview of what you'd like to accomplish.
Our primary accomplishment we'd like to do is put an addition on the front, basically an eight-foot-by-20-foot-long, 24-foot-long lobby. With the traffic flow we have, right now we just have access to one door that's in and out. By building this lobby, we'd like to have a entrance door and an exit door to provide a more timely, fashionable drop-off and pickup for customers to prevent any overflow of traffic.
And so the plan that we've got before us, this is new, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any thoughts on that?
Just a reminder that the kennel, animal daycare-type operation in the rural farm district is permitted use by special exception. So the use that was there, anytime that use is changed or expanded or enlarged in any way, requires the applicant to come back to the zoning board and get approval under that special exception for any change in that use. And that's what Mr. Leflam is here tonight to do. There was also, the reason you have a modified site plan is I requested from Sean Kelly that, I know that there had been some additional paving done out there. And so we wanted to show where the original paving had stopped and what the additional paving was done. That's kind of where work stopped, past the process up to go through the zoning board the way that it was supposed to be done. So that's why you have that updated plan, is just to show you the extent of the new pavement and the new parking spaces that were created as part of this project.
Is this new, is this a new piece or?
Should be labeled right on there.
Okay, can you see?
Well, I don't know, I hope you can see. Because I don't have one in front of me, but there is one up on the screen. I'll see if I can blow that up a little bit for you. So, yeah, so the previous of parking paved, let's see, and so you can help me out here.
Right with that pole, you have the pole line?
Pole was where the limit of the paved parking was, correct?
Correct, and you had six, seven, and eight, basically as a parking area.
Right.
Plus, on the other side, you had nine, 10, and 11, which still exist.
And for some reason I was thinking that three and four and five were listed as gravel.
Correct. Yeah, but that was more for the employee parking?
Right, but now it's paved.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, I see, I see what it is. They've paved down as far as three, four, and five, and then one and two remains gravel at this time.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or is that all paved?
So this is all, one, two, yeah, right, you have your marker now. One, two, three, four, five, six, up two is all paved.
That's all paved, yeah.
Yeah, and that, before that is now grass.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that the only thing that's?
That's the only difference is they broke out. I think the original site plan that was presented just showed the, all the paved area. It showed the dash lines that marked out where the previous limits were.
All right, good, thank you. And the addition itself is, I'd like to see, the opening, so the open entrance with the covered, is that right?
That is correct.
And then the two windows and the side door are?
Yep.
That's the extension, and that?
That is the extension.
That's how many feet, it's a little bit high for me to read.
Eight by twenty-four.
Eight by twenty-four.
Eight by twenty-four.
Setbacks are okay?
Yep.
So setbacks are okay, so we're just dealing with this exception.
Mr. Lef, it's okay, Mr. Chairman, you're also proposing at this time a future 35 by 48 covered pavilion, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what's the timeframe do you think for that? Is it within the next 12 months?
I would hope so.
Okay.
Yes, once the ground thaws, but that's a, provide a covering for the outside animals. Right now, you know, we are an off-leash, open facility, fresh air, four seasons, but it would be nice to provide a type of pavilion, especially rainy days, cold days, snowy days, where we can have that area for the dogs to stay dry.
It's basically a posted roofed structure?
Correct.
No walls?
No walls, no walls.
Why don't we go through the standards of special exception? Do you have your copy there? What I'll do is I'll read in question and you can just answer it.
Okay, absolutely.
So the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Do you have your?
I do not have that, it will not, no.
Do you want to repeat that? This is just that.
Oh, okay, excellent, thank you. If you could explain why it won't?
We're just creating a lobby with no additional features that would cause any of this to, any sewage, we do not, we're not adding any type of bathroom facility.
So you're not looking for more area, you're not looking for larger area for the animals?
No, this is more for the customers, just to have a lobby to come in and then an exit door.
And the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity?
No, it will not.
And if you could do me a favor, read that right in there, so that, because this is on the tape as record, so we can find, get that in there, can you see that right?
Yes.
Go ahead, just read that right in, that'd be great.
The, by adding addition?
Yes.
Yep. By adding this addition to the front of the building, we see no change in additional pedestrian or vehicle or traffic conditions. The design of this particular addition and overhang will improve the current flow of pedestrian traffic in our parking lot. By expanding our lobby space and provide an overhang, the lobby space will be able to accommodate up to five to six clients at a time. The current space can only hold one to two clients and their pets at a time right now.
Thank you. Next item. The proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, require a substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Yes, this is correct. The only purpose for this expansion of our lobby is to provide a safe, more customer and dog-friendly space and reduce pedestrian traffic in our parking lot. We see no need for an extra degree of fire or police protection.
And the proposed use will not result in cementation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies?
Correct. We will have proper drainage, rain gutters, and downspouts to match the existing rain gutters on the current building. There will be no additional plumbing or drainage installed in the proposed lobby extension.
And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development?
Yes, the plans are compatible with existing uses. The purpose of the lobby expansion is only for customer convenience. Our plans are to improve the visual impact by creating a more appropriate and modern entrance with very little impact. We were careful to design a space where our clients can enter from the front of the new addition and exit safely through the west side of the new addition, all without disturbing the existing side entrance of the home.
And you're not in the shoreline zone? Is that just, you know, I'm sorry about that. And you have the, is the property owned by the owner?
Correct, it is, Sean Kelly.
And the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet any standards of this section and comply with any conditions imposed by the board regarding this such section?
Yes.
And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise or hours of operation?
Correct, there will be no changes in hours of operation or generation of noise.
When was this officially, originally approved? I think that I noted, oh, yeah, I did.
I'm so thorough. It was originally approved in 2002.
Do you know of any complaints or any problems?
I haven't been contacted by anyone.
If we did not, I'll open up the public. Nobody from the public wishes to speak, we'll close the public part. And we'll come back to the board for discussion, comments, questions. Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I have no problem, because I think it, I think you've done a nice job keeping it looking like the rest of the building and it kind of fits right in, so I'm good with that.
I'd like to just get some clarification as to procedures. All dogs are outside?
Yeah, we have, our yard space, basically our off-leash facility, so we have dogs that we play in the open outside. We do have a large living room space that is currently there, if it is extremely cold for one. Or dogs that are older can come in, that way we play movies all day on the TV for the dogs so they can, it sounds a home. But our main goal right now is just to have, basically we have six to eight hours of playtime outside pending the weather. In climate weather, we do bring them in, you know, especially cold days, it's not safe for a dog to be out longer than a period of time, so we bring them in to warm up. That's when we have movie time, this way we can just try to keep everyone happy, safe in the living room area, and have a good time as well in play, and then when they're warmed up, and we are warmed up as employees, we can proceed back outside and let the dogs perform their tasks of having fun.
On that subject of tasks, regarding the issue of create unnecessary unsanitary conditions of sewage disposal or emissions, you're, that's not sewage there, is it? What do you do with the waste?
That is, the, as far as our, the waste, like blowbathers comes and takes care of that.
Okay, is that what you do?
Yeah, on a yearly basis, actually, yes, yeah.
Does it have a container or just a?
It's a septic system, yeah, the?
Oh, it's a pump?
Yep.
Thank you. That, just wanted to refresh my memory on how it all worked, and just.
You're talking about human waste, correct?
No, no, dog.
Oh, dog waste, okay, see, I gotta go back then, I'm sorry. No, well, every day we bag the dog's waste. It goes into a pine tree waste bin. Pine Tree will come weekly and pick up the waste and dispose of it for us.
Okay.
Yep.
I was thinking you were tossing it down the toilet there.
Yeah, I was like, geez, I, wait a minute, we're talking dogs, we'll make sure.
I thought maybe they had all the dogs trained.
Now that would be impressive.
And noise waste, how do you handle it? Do the dogs get going, do they, are they in a pack like that?
Well, in a pack, you do have, you know, it's just their nature, I call it talking to their people. They like to communicate with each other. Basically, what we use is our voices, we do have, what we have is like birdhouse dog whistles. If there's an excessive amount of dog barking, we can turn on the dog, we call it, they're little birdhouses, but it's a dog whistle. It just prevents the barking from getting excessively too loud.
Really?
If dogs do continue to bark, which you do have some in packs that just like to run and bark, you have to respect the neighbors, we've done, same with Gray, but we do have to bring them in just to kind of relieve that area, because it does get noisy, and we don't want to cause any, you know, disruption to anyone nearby.
Other questions, Ms. Shoup, anything? And a motion for the discussion?
I'll just add one thing, there's one more step after the board makes its decision. If they decide to approve, then this has to go before the planning board for their site plan review because it is an expansion of the site, too. So just wanted to make that.
Thank you.
Both to approve, approve is submitted?
Second on that?
Yeah.
Discussion on the motion. So just, so I understand correctly, so we're approving this subject to the planning board's final vote. Is that because of the building structure?
First, building additions, and there's parking, additional parking, paved area.
And the proposed future covered play area, that has to be done within a year?
If it's part of this approval, and that's why I asked about the timeframe.
Yep.
Otherwise, if you decided to put that off two years or something, you'd be back here again to ask for that.
Yeah, no, our goal is definitely within the 12-month period, yes.
So basically, your clock starts from the time it's approved?
It's approved until, yes.
I believe that would be the?
I would believe it'd be sooner than the later.
Well, let's assume everything goes through smoothly, let's assume, and I'm not making, I'm not making this assumption, but if we painted the scenario that the zoning board approves, then it goes to planning board, it would probably be on the next agenda, and, and they would have six months, basically, to start, to get their permits and start construction on the entrance. And, and I think if this is approved as one project, that would get the project started, and if you wanted in the next six months to start the pavilion, you could do that, and it would, your approval would still be intact.
Okay, excellent.
You can, you can request in writing one, one-time-only, six-month extension to the zoning board's approval if you need it, but you're going to have a planning board approval running concurrently too, so you, I think your expectation is you'll get started before and probably finish the projects in that timeframe.
Okay, excellent, yep.
So is there a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? And all in favor?
Fine, thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll take that back, thanks. No problem, how about you?
Hey. Pretty calm.
They only do it. Sorry, I didn't mean to almost paper cut you. Division of Hazard.
2594.
Did the concert get over with?
The next appeal is appeal number 2594, it's a special exception application by Mr. Leflam, considering six broad turn roads, this is map R25 parcel 1A. And as you might remember, this was tabled by the board for information at the time. And we've got some information from Mr. Leflam, go through and explain. Again, just so everybody that's listening might have a better understanding of what this is about, and then go into the issues that we may have specifically adjusted.
And I also have additional information for you, if I can give that to you?
Sure.
Okay. And this is for a, I have a 20 by 20 detached garage that I want to use to display cabinets to be able to bring a client in to just view them. Hopefully they'll place an order and, you know, go from there. And I do have some copies of some additional information for you. Thank you. I'll take one for your file, please.
Um, yes, you have an extra.
And I believe the biggest thing when, the last time when we finished was the possible traffic issues, because I thought that like a semi truck would have to be delivering it in front of Broad Turn, and that is not the case. There will be no semi trucks. If, when there is a delivery, it will be just a small box truck, probably no bigger than a UPS or FedEx truck that would come in. So that's the first thing.
And the reason for that, did you just get a clarification or?
I did, yes. They do not go to residential areas with semis because there's no place to dock. There's no dock, you know, a place to, yeah, so, good to know.
So they probably use a truck similar to something like a Lowe's or Home Depot style truck?
Exactly.
And they drive into your driveway?
Yes, yeah, they back up right to the garage area, yeah, and drop off.
And then what will you be using to transfer? If you package it yourself and make it there, what will you use to deliver it?
I have, yes, I have a van and I have utility trailer, so it has the hitch, you can just, I can use either the van or both to deliver. And then, I know you had questions on the assembly. They are assembly, I have some pictures attached that shows that, you know, what they do, there's, you know, the front, the sides, the back, that's attached. That's the part I would do. So I just showed you pictures of exactly what they do, attached. And then the collection. And then finally, a kitchen I did, so, and these were put together, and.
Good job with the line of site pictures.
Thank you. And I believe that was the biggest, questions you had was those, was the traffic and the assembly part of it, so I provide you with those pictures and.
Just give the board a little bit of time to look through the pictures. You do have to ask, like, you need to consider.
Real men carry measures.
Those would be a pretty sturdy, that's a pretty sturdy cabinet.
Yeah, I mean, most of them are solid wood cabinets, they're, and I think that's how most of them come anyways. You buy them from a Lowe's or Home Depot, they still have to order them, they have to be put together, and then they're shipped, so it's pretty much the same process.
Appreciate it. All right, so why don't we continue, if you want, you can read your letter right into the record if you'd like.
I'm sorry?
If you'd like to read your letter right into the record, that would be fine.
My latest letter?
Sure.
Okay. It says, "Thank you for your comments and concerns on our first meeting in December for the use of the detached garage for the cabinet displays, and allow me to return to clarify these. The 20 by 20 detached garage will be used as a showroom for display cabinets. Customers can view the display options available by appointment. There'll be only one or two appointments daily that will last approximately one hour. This will be, this will help customers identify the style and color of cabinets they would like and allow them to actually see them in person, which is my main objective for having this display. The cabinets will be shipped either directly to the customer or a storage facility to later be delivered or to my place, or to the garage. If there are large orders, I can also have them sent to a third-party location and then have them assembled, such as a warehouse, if it becomes too much. If a delivery would need to be made to a house, the distributor informed me that they would use a small box truck for anything coming to a residential area. The truck would come right into the driveway and would not have any impact on traffic on the broad turn road. The driveway is approximately 90 feet long with an additional paved area for two more vehicles to the left. We are on a 1.89 acre lot, and the closest neighbors being at least 500 feet minimum on the left and right of us, as well as no one directly in front of our location. Attached are pictures showing the driveway and street views, and those were my original pictures I had sent. I hope this letter has clarified my intentions with the business and that it will not hinder the area in any negative way. And I ask that you grant me the ability to use a detached garage for display purposes for the business, and thank you for your time and consideration."
And the truck, if the truck comes in, can they back up and then go all straight to the back?
They can do it in many different ways. UPS and FedEx both come in right into my driveway, and I believe they've done both, such as pulling forward past my house on Broad Turn and backing right in, which would be fine. Or there's also the side driveway, which is plenty of room for a truck to pull in there and back around.
Yeah, it looks like you have a little bit of a turnaround by the basketball hoop.
That's correct. And right now you can park three vehicles there.
Did we get any letters on this?
We did not.
So I'll open the public hearing again. There are no people, so we will close the public hearing part. Board questions or comments on this section, this issue specific, and then we'll come back and we'll go over the prior approval again, if it's something as we move forward. Actually, any comments she's got, or the clarifications of some of the things I asked for, some things other people did?
I think the information you gave us tonight pretty much clears up, at least the concern.
Actually, any comments she's got, or the clarifications of some of the things I asked for, some things other people did?
I think the information you gave us tonight pretty much clears up at least the concern that I had in regard to what you were doing. So thank you, this is very good.
Thank you.
What were the dimensions on the proposed sunroom?
I'm sorry?
The sunroom, what were the dimensions on that?
On the sunroom behind the house?
Yeah, is that part of this project?
No, it's not. And actually, it's gone. We're doing an addition back there, that's actually in the works right now, we just tore that down.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I can clarify that. We just pulled that out of the file to give her something to show you as a site.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Yep.
The other location that you, have you identified that location yet?
It would be a storage unit. There's a couple companies, such as, I think right on US1 is it Southern Storage, I believe, is who I contacted, and they would allow me to bring in whatever I needed. And even if a semi, well, not a semi truck, but, you know, larger trucks could go in there to deliver things, so that's another option, and, yep.
And you're aware it's 400 square feet, which is basically the size of your garage. You don't have facilities in there now, do you?
I'm sorry?
Do you have restroom facilities or anything in there now?
No, no.
And you're not planning that?
No.
The sign is you were planning on...
Doing a small sign out front, yes. Whatever you allow.
Could be six square feet, depending on how far back it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, six square feet. So, that's good. And then, any other comments, questions for both before we jump in?
Yeah, I'm assuming you have no plans to put any storage containers on the property?
No. Everything is gonna, everything that will fit inside the garage will go in the garage. If there's overflow, it will go into a storage unit.
Okay.
So there'll be, you wouldn't see anything from, when you're driving by, anything different than right now, everything would be hidden in the garage.
The storage units off-site, correct?
Yes, yes.
And, I guess, what's your, what's your plan on the cabinets? Are you gonna wrap them all the way around, or what, how are you gonna, I'm wondering about how much space you're gonna have left to do assembly?
Okay, so right now, we're gonna do half the garage as a display area, and then the other half will be used for assembly. If it becomes too much, I can add on and do an additional building on-site for just assembly. And Brian told me, right, that I could have up to an...
Yeah, just to clarify, a detached accessory building can be 1,000 square feet for the special exception home occupation. Retail space is limited to 400 square feet. So she could have 600 additional square feet for assembly.
Good to know. All right. Just so you know, I would have voted no for this last month. I can't say anybody else, but you've done enough work for me to feel comfortable with what you're trying to accomplish, and you probably learned a little bit in the process.
Yes, I did, I appreciate it, your comments, and it's a learning experience.
It is.
To start, yeah.
Self-employed, tough.
Yeah.
So why don't we start through the standards? But do you have a copy of that?
I do, yes.
I'm like, we'll just take each one separately. I'm gonna shoot, you get to start. Also, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthy conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation. And if you just read in what you had written?
Yeah, the display in the garage will not create any public safety problems.
The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. Can you go ahead and read in your comments?
I apologize, I was on the wrong one. I'm trying to bring up their page, I apologize. Go back to A. The first one, yeah, we're gonna go back to A. Okay, I apologize.
I'll read it again. The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthy conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Right, it is a cabinet display in the detached garage and will not have any sewage disposal or other unhealthy conditions created.
And proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing foreseeable traffic.
No, the business will be by appointment only, won't have only one additional car at the premises, so will not create any unsafe traffic conditions. Once a week, I believe that a truck will deliver, may come to deliver product, there is an adequate amount of parking, as shown in pictures attached.
And proposed use will not, I'm sorry, the proposed use will not create public safety problems which should be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection existing uses in the neighborhood.
Right, the display in the garage will not create any public safety problems.
And the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion and have an adverse effect on the water supplies.
Right, there will not be any sedimentation or erosion created or on water supplies from the display of the cabinets.
And proposed use will have, be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
Right, the use will be compatible with existing uses, it will be the existing garage 20 by 20 that will be used only to house the cabinet displays.
And, you're not necessarily on his own?
No.
And then we come to, you own the property?
Yes.
And you have the financial abilities to...
Yes.
And the proposed use will not be, will be compatible with existing uses with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation?
That's correct.
Okay, and so the home occupation part I'll read in and we'll answer those also, okay? "The occupation or profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal building or within the building's accessory thereto."
Right.
Which would be the garage.
Yeah.
"The home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of dwelling unit for residential purposes." And the square footage would kind of mandate that. "No more than one person who is a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in the home occupation."
Right.
At this point, you have no point?
No one, right.
"Exterior signs shall be permitted in accordance with home occupation sign provisions in Section 12 Sign Regulations Section E," which is basically a 2 by 3 sign, or 2 by 2 sign, or whatever. And I think you said last time, is you gonna put your name of the business and phone number or website?
Exactly, yeah.
"And other items like flags or lights are, they're not..."
No.
Four feet, 6 feet to 6 feet.
Okay.
Okay. "There shall be no exterior display or exterior storage of materials and, and no other exterior indication of a home occupation of variation from the residential character of the neighborhood. This is prohibited, this provision shall not apply to storage of lobster traps."
Right, there will not be any.
"No nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors of glass, kitty whips."
No.
"And traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood."
That's correct.
"And in addition, in addition to the off-street parking provided to meet normal requirements of dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for vehicles of employees, parking there and the turnaround. You're not using any more than 20% of the dwelling unit flooring area." And you've done the math right, that's okay. "And we've got less than 1,000 feet. And home occupations make include retail sales under the assumption of the following: No more than 400 feet, square feet can be used to sell products that are limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed on premises and seafood caught or harvested on the program." And the other two don't apply, but we're keying on the sale of the products is limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed. And in this case, this would be assembled.
Right.
Okay, so the provision that allows that, just to clarify on that issue, that, I just wanna confirm with the board on this specific item that we all agree that assembled in Section 10B of Section 9, we agree that is a legitimate, this, this project concept meets that definition of assembled based on what we believe.
I actually have a couple questions.
Right.
Probably as a new member, but the first requirement, you were saying that the operation is done wholly in the building? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then now you're asking that the assembly is done strictly on the property, right?
Just gotta make sure I'm reading them. Where, you're taking Section B?
Just the retail operations is within the building.
No, it's anything?
So I guess what I'm trying to...
No, it's just to clarify, whatever's being sold is produced, assembled, oh, what's the third one? Or processed on the premises.
Okay, so when...
It's a broad net. If you were a gardener, you probably wouldn't grow your vegetables in the garage, but you'd grow them behind the garage in the garden, so they're on that.
She's proposing that she'll go off-site at some point, I mean, again, I just don't understand, like, when part of her proposal is that I will move off-site if it gets to be too much, that's just to store them.
That would be the overflow.
Overflow, yes.
The overflow, I think, is what she's talking about.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I don't know, I...
No, that's correct, that's correct. Any overflow, and then I can bring them back to site to assemble.
I think to clarify what I think you're coming at.
Okay.
Everything, anything that's on this location needs to be done inside that 400 square foot.
Right.
Unless they come back for expansion for the extra six feet.
Yeah, I was trying to understand how the storage unit plays in, what would be, how that would tie into the business, but...
It wouldn't be a problem with them having another facility on-site, if they chose. So, back to the assembled part, I wanna make sure that everybody's comfortable with assembling cabinets on-site. And it doesn't mention display, which is interesting. It talks about the sale of products is limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises. And the total area devoted to retail sales limits to 400 square feet, it must be fully enclosed within the building. To me, there's a fine line there, I mean, we could get, we could riddle that to the point where we cut our fingers. But to me, it really comes down to being, some of it's going to be, this is not traditional retail sales, they're not coming in and buying a soda and leaving, they're not coming in and buying fruits and vegetables and leaving. It's really a display area where some product may or may not be assembled. And for my comfort level on ten and A and B, I feel that meets that standard. Does the rest of the board agree with that logic?
Yes.
Can I get, just to comment across the board, anybody, you agree with that? So then just get a verbal response on that from everybody?
Sure, I agree with that.
Are you okay with that?
I said it last morning.
Okay, good. That was just, to me, a fine point that I wanted to get off the table.
And just to clarify what you've already done, I believe, none of the stuff of the storage, you're not gonna go over there and assemble anything over there?
No, it's just overflow, right.
Right at the location.
For some reason, there's overflow, I have that backup place to just have it at the time, and then bring it back to assemble.
But there would be no reason why she couldn't assemble that site?
Yeah, it's really, I guess I'm confused by your line of question, I'm, quite frankly...
I was just trying to figure out.
I'm a little timing myself. I look at the business as sort of, and correct me if I'm wrong, I look at the business as sort of a two-pronged business. It's, part of it is consultant, or kitchen design consultant, because you're, you're showing them lines of cabinets and helping them pick out things that people would want in their kitchens.
Right.
And so that's sort of one part of the business.
Right.
And in order to do that, I, as I see it, you're displaying some of that product.
Yes.
To kind of help them get a feel for, is it the type of product and the style that they want.
Exactly.
So that's kind of the consultant thing. Yeah, you're sort of selling, you're selling the person on that brand, but you're not actually selling the cabinet at that point.
Right.
Then if they do decide that they want that cabinet, then you have, and this is where I'm maybe not clear, then you have the ability to order that in.
You order that in.
To that same garage, 20 by 20 garage, assemble those cabinets for them and load them into your vehicles and deliver them to...
To the location.
To the location.
Sure, yep.
The other thing that you could do, which would not be unlike someone who has a business where they sell something over the internet from a home office, which doesn't even have to come before you guys. So you don't even have, you know, you could actually sell something over the internet, it goes directly to that person, it never touches your hand. It's still retail, but it's not retail on the, on the site. So, I'm, I'm sort of not seeing...
I'm just filling in a hole that I thought potentially could be there. Strictly, the only reason why I did it is because assembled and, to me, the, no, no, I... There's four words that allow that.
Yeah, I understand that.
And that's the only reason why.
I just sort of, I'm, I'm just sort of looking at this more holistically, I guess, as sort of a consultant, kind of, she's got two prongs, she's got the consultant kitchen design kind of concept going, and then she's got the ability to sell some cabinets on-site or have them, if it's a large order and she can't fit it in there, they could be delivered right to the job site. And somebody else can assemble them, or she can assemble them there. She's, nothing's preventing her from going off-site and working at what she does.
That's what the, for that question.
That's what I was getting at. It's just that, it's just that what, if she sells something on-site, it has to be assembled on-site.
And so I'm just gonna read in this last two comments that you had put in on the clarification regarding the traffic issues. There will not be any tractor trailer deliveries or deliveries on the street. This is because there's no loading dock. When a delivery needs to be made, it will be made with a small box truck style, very similar to UPS or FedEx truck that pulls into the driveway. And if the delivery's become too frequent, say more than two a week, I have a storage facility available to have deliveries sent to, and store materials, I own a van, utility trailers transport any product I need, need to. In assembly, I will be assembling the cabinets, sorry, the cabinetry. And attached are photos of actual assembly process. Also pictured are many of the solid wood cabinet styles available for sale. Additionally, the two pictures show an actual kitchen completed by myself and my husband with the cabinet line, which is very attractive. Okay, so I'd like to do now, just go real quickly through requirements of this special exception. Okay, we're at two minutes, let's just go through. So on the standards of the exception, I'm gonna start down here with the shoot. "Proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthy conditions by reason sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operations."
And she's made it very clear that she's really not making any changes to the actual building or anything.
I think she's answered it fine for me, Mr. Sir.
Yeah, no, I think that's real clear, that there's, there's no, no sewage, no water, so I would have to agree.
Yeah, I would agree. I just had one question, I don't know where it falls into any of this. Everything's probably gonna be shipped in packing material and stuff, do you have sufficient place to put that for, like, I'm sure it's probably coming in styrofoam and...
Right, yes, I would have a place to put that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you needed a small dumpster, that would be okay?
Yeah.
Make sure it was okay by these guys? She's answered the question, first question adequately, obviously, because it doesn't really apply to too much of what she's doing. "And the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular, pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing foreseeable traffic in the vicinity?" That's true.
I think you've clarified very clearly that this is not gonna be an issue, I think.
Yes, again, it's, it's not a typical retail operation, so we're not gonna see a volume of traffic there.
I would agree, she's got the turnaround in the driveway, and she's got another transportation where things can be taken to the storage unit, she can bring them back. She's got a huge delivery that just won't fit.
She's fine, clearly, one customer at a time, you know, appointment, it's fine. This is very, very clear to me, this was the issue that would have broken it for me, and I think you've done a good job taking that concern off my plate.
Thank you.
"Proposed use will not create public safety problems which should be substantially different from those created by the existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire protection, police protection in existing neighborhood."
Okay, again, I mean, everything's gonna be inside, not many changes, so I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I think with the, with the minimum traffic and, and the number of people going in and out, I don't see any, any changes.
I don't see anything to do with public safety at all, where everything's being done inside the building.
Yeah, particularly with just a delivery a week on a FedEx-sized truck, that's fine. With the hammerhead up near the garage and the driveways, it looks plenty wide, no problem. And I ask... You don't need to ask, it's snow, make sure they're in front so that they can make the turn.
Yeah, absolutely.
And proposed use will not result in any sedimentation or erosion, and have an adverse effect on the water supplies?
She's not making any physical changes to the property, so, no.
Yeah, no impervious, no impervious issues there.
Yeah, I don't see anything that would affect any of those.
You know. And I'm in the same place. I do have a question that kind of resolves back to C, the last comment. How do you find the heat facility?
I have a pellet stove that I would like to hook up in there.
It is in there now?
It's sitting in there right now, just not hooked up.
It needs to be done by the town, do you have anything for the department to check in?
No, it just has to be installed to manufacturer's guidance.
Okay.
But the pellet stove can't, if, if the garage ever reverts back to a garage, you can't have a pellet stove in there.
Okay, sounds good.
Proposed use will not result in any sedimentation or erosion, I have no problem with that. Proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood, and in respect to the physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
I think you've provided adequate, adequate pictures, and shown that really you're not changing anything to the property. It still looks pretty all residential.
Yes, I would agree, I don't see any changes to the physical size.
Yeah, the only potential change that she mentioned, and she's already discussed with Brian, is that she needs to expand, so.
The sign's the only thing you know is different there, I think. And then, the last one, you're not in show land zone, so it's moved. So, do you have a motion for approval?
I think we have a couple more.
We have more.
I do have a question, well, maybe more information, just getting back to you on the wood stove.
Okay.
It may not be a town thing?
Okay.
But you may wanna check with your insurance carrier?
Yes.
Because that's gonna have to be on a separate flu, obviously.
Yes.
And they are requiring either fire department or manufacturer specification, so if you install it yourself, it still needs to be inspected by someone that's licensed to inspect it.
Okay, thank you.
On your own personal?
Yes.
Well-being, I don't wanna have you do it, and then have your insurance company come out and say, you can have that there.
Right, okay, thank you.
And you said you own the property?
Yes.
So, there's no debate on that for the board. Now, the app has technical and financial ability, any questions on that from the board?
No.
Compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation. Still doesn't make very much noise. So, now, let's go back, I think we've got all this time, right? Okay, let's go to the board for a motion.
Move to approve, as proposed.
And second? Discussion motion. I don't know, Dave. Congratulations, you went to noted, yes.
Thank you.
My opinion, that's what happened.
Good luck.
So.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you for doing the extra work on that.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your input.
You should've come back one more time, because you're getting more advertising.
I know. Well, there's a lot of work to do now.
Next time you come back, wear a T-shirt with your business name on it.
Little flag. Best of luck with it, I hope it works really well.
No.
Really?
Yeah, I'm gonna help you out.
Okay.
I do.
And board talk? Did you have any thoughts?
I had a question about something Brian said, just in general about the rules, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Brian said that, I think he just said that if something is, if something is sold on-site, it has to be assembled on-site?
If it, if it's a home occupation with a retail component?
Yeah.
You're not on that page now.
It's a retail component.
Oh, yeah, it is on, it's in Section 9, right?
Right here, Brian.
You have three options. If there's a retail component on-site?
Yeah.
It has to be, yeah. So, it has, if the sale, the sale of products is limited to products and articles produced, so, vegetables, hand-knit articles?
Okay.
Grabs, or assembled, or processed. So, you could take something like Coke bottles, and process them, and make something out of them, and sell, sell them on-site. So, those are the three? Sausage, you, yeah, yeah, maybe homemade venison, sausage, or something. So, there's those three options. So, in other words, you can't just order in bulk something off the internet, bring it into your house and sell it. You know what I mean? Knickknacks, retail.
Right.
Yeah, but you can sell your service, I was thinking about this, you know, you could be, you could be someone who installs air conditioners, and maybe could do the same thing, you could have a display of the air conditioners that you sell and install at your place of business. Somebody orders one, you, you go, just like a plumber, just like an electrician, you go to their site and install it. That's not really retail, you're not retailing them, you're, you're doing it as a consultant or a.
I think what triggered me was, you, we said that we could, she could install them at the property, the cabinet, and I think that's where I was confused as, well, she's selling it?
Well, yeah, it is.
And I think that's where I was confused.
It is. And it's, this isn't sort of the normal kind of thing that you would think about, so it does kind of, Mark's right, it's kind of along that fine line, but when you stop and think about it, that's where I kind of break it into two separate businesses. It's kind of a consulting business. Here's a, here's a line of cabinetry in a style, and let me help you pick that out, and design your kitchen for you in, in some respects. And then, they can go to the site and install that cabinetry, the transaction happens somewhere in there, but she's, in that case, not physically selling that product at, on the premises.
Thank you.
Same, it's, same as a plumber is not physically installing a water heater for you at his premises, he's coming to your house to do it, but he could still have plumbing.
Display of type.
Yeah, he could, he could have his plumbing business as a home occupation at his house in a garage, showing different fixtures, for example. Kind of, people aren't necessarily gonna walk in and buy that toilet that's on display, but they're gonna order one, have it delivered at their house, and you can install it. You know, that, that's how I look.
I liked your analogy, I thought.
I don't know if that makes sense to anybody else, but that's how I made sense of it.
I just had to deal with that, my parents think, so I don't, it's perfectly, sit down with somebody, design it out, like that look.
Think of a real, think of a real estate broker, who might wanna run real estate profits out of his house. He's, he's selling real estate, but he's not selling it at his house, he's providing a service. He's a real estate provider, and retailer. That, I, you know, I don't know, Karen, if that makes sense, that's how I was making sense of it.
It does, I look at every single word very technically when I read it, so, I'm trying to understand it.
You know, speaking of that, I think it's really important about the board, that I think it's important, different personalities, and the importance of paying attention to people with different sets of skills than we have. I'm a manager of sales component, I think 30,000 feet most of my time. My wife is granular, so, we get the full range of views. You guys all have different sets of skills, bring to the table, Karen has her sets of skills, and that's why it's so important that when we're all together, we listen and respect each other's things, because even though I might not think of it, because I'm at 30,000 feet, anybody's flown in an airplane, a small airplane, once you're a couple hundred feet off the ground, you don't realize the trees are high, they look flat. Yet, somebody that's ground-based, well, like Karen, which I would say is granular, she says, well, that's a big, that's a big tree, and not in the element of sight. So, that's, I just think an important issue of why the board works, and how it should work in person.
And that is actually why Mark's wife does not allow him to fly anymore.
Or anybody flies with Mark. None of us are going up in an airplane with him anytime soon.
I just, it's true. So, nice, all right. Any other comments? It's a, none of the proposed adjourn?
Proposed adjourned, back.
And no discussion? Please adjourn. Thank you very much.